I'd like to call this special meeting of the Urbana City Council to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Jacobson? Ms. Ammons? Ms. Marlin?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe? Mr. Madigan?
Here.
Mayor Pressing?
Here. I think Carol Ammons is here.
Okay.
Okay, um, do we have any public input? Guess not. Okay, um, then we'll start the council orientation. Did you want to start first, or who wants to start? You really, the clerk?
Okay, I can start. I actually have two presentations. And I'm going to be down here. That's the Police Department overview. And then we'll go upstairs after Ms. Clark finishes hers, and then we can talk a little bit about safety and security. Just some overviews for that.
In case you don't know, this is our police chief, Pat Connolly.
Okay, I'll take off page one, because that was the whole introduction part. And actually, thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'm Pat Connolly. I'm the police chief. I'm going to provide you with a very quick overview about the Police Department. And now, it's going to be very easy for me to talk about the Police Department, and show you some slides, and show you some statistics, and talk about the leadership team specifically. But we could talk about this for hours, and you really won't get the flavor for it until you hop in a squad car and ride with us. So I am extending an invitation to anybody on the -- and I know a lot of you have already done a number of ride-alongs in the past. But I would encourage you at any time, especially the new folks on the council who would be interested in riding with our patrol division for a bit of time, just to get acclimated to what our philosophy is, and talk about the numbers, and talk about what our job responsibilities are. You are -- you have an open invitation, so anytime you're interested in doing that, feel free to give me a call. I put together a PowerPoint program tonight, just so that we can kind of go through, because when I start talking about beat configurations and the different responsibilities as far as what police cars are responsible for what section of the city, it's just easier to illustrate it. So I will -- you will be able to see it on your screens in front of you there, but I will go through some of these. But if at any point anybody has any questions, feel free to stop me, and we can dive into it. First and foremost, I think with respect to the philosophy of the Police Department, I can tell you that the mission of the Urbana Police is to enhance the quality of life by working cooperatively with the community, and within the framework of the Constitution, to enforce the laws, preserve the peace, reduce the fear of crime, and create a safe environment for all. And Urbana Police continually strive for excellence in the performance of their duties through training, education, and collaboration with its citizens. And that's an important mission statement, because you will see on our website, in all of our literature, that it identifies that the Police Department can't -- and you will hear me say, in speaking in the future, a thousand different times, that there is no way that we can do this job by ourselves. I'm going to go over the Manning issues in a little bit, and you'll see that we just don't have sufficient manpower to be able to address all the needs. And that's why it's incredibly important that the way we do that is through collaboration with the community. And so far, we've got a great start on that. I've been in my position for a little over two years. The leadership team had some changes, because Anthony was the Assistant Chief of Police. He is now the chief over at Champaign. But to be honest with you, that's a good thing. And I say that's a good thing, because collectively, within the law enforcement community in Champaign County, we are really communicating well with one another. Oftentimes, you know, as you continue in your positions here, you will realize that Wright Street is the invisible dividing line between Champaign and Urbana, and yet, the problems that occur just west of Wright Street are problems that are not unique just to them. It's a community problem that we try to address, and try to identify, and try to get in front of. So our working with the Sheriff's Office, and with Jeff Christensen from the University Police, and Rantoul Police Department, all of us really have a very good working relationship. And Anthony's added tremendously to that. And because of that, plus Anthony knowing the philosophy, and kind of the direction that our Police Department was going for the 20 years he was here, it kind of keeps us moving in the right direction. So that's a real positive thing. The philosophy of the higher Police Department is build a relationship with the community. With nine neighborhood organizations and 15 neighborhood watch groups, we're certainly moving in the right direction, but we certainly have more to do. As you'll see throughout the presentation, we're required to do more with less, but I really want to emphasize how important it is that the police officers during their non-allocated time, that's the time that's not committed to 911 calls for service or going to and from those, that they get out and engage with the community. And we have a number of different programs that I will share with you very briefly about how we do that. I know this is a very busy slide, but just to help illustrate the number of active neighborhood watch groups that we have currently, these are the neighborhood watch groups. There were 15 of them, where police officers from our variety of beats actually go and engage with the community. As a matter of fact, in one of those groups, the second to the bottom, the AMVETS neighborhood group, actually had 70 participants in it at one time. And I spoke to them one evening, and I'm sure you've heard several years ago, we had a tragic event. We're down in southeastern Urbana, we had a 74-year-old woman who was battered and locked in a closet, and actually left for dead. And I was sharing the story about how important it was that because of a postal inspector, a postal carrier who is diligent enough to see that, and by some neighbors who got involved, the police came, we searched, we found the woman who was still alive, and it was absolutely incredible. And I was sharing that story about how important it was that neighborhood watch groups work together, and presenting to these 70 folks, and lo and behold, this woman, sitting right in the front row, raises her hand and says, "That woman was me." So it's kind of cool that we have that many people that are engaging in the community. And that's kind of the direction that we're moving with respect to the neighborhood watch groups. In addition to the neighborhood watch groups, we also have -- whoops, I'm sorry. I went back up for just a second. My fault. We also have a number of neighborhood associations. Currently, there are nine of them. I got my slides messed up. I apologize. These are the neighborhood watch groups, 15 of them. The neighborhood associations are identified on your list there. Those are groups that contain people that are not necessarily participating in a neighborhood watch group, but are part of this association. As an example, Wednesday or Thursday night, we, all of the leadership team, are going to the annual SUNA meeting. That's the Southeastern Urbana Neighborhood Association, where people who are not necessarily engaged with neighborhood watch groups still attend the SUNA Association. And we talk about the issues of the Police Department and the needs of the community, and we then try to work between those organizations to better improve police services. Switching gears a little bit now, just so that I can give you an overview of kind of the structure and the organizational chart for the Police Department. As you can see, the police chief and the administrative secretary, that's Cassie Heldman. She's the real boss. She should be on the top of this slide, because Cassie does an incredible amount of work. And anytime you call the police administrative office, Cassie will be your first point of contact. Quite honestly, most of the time, if you have questions, Cassie will be able to answer them for you with respect to statistical stuff that you might need. But I would certainly also be available, and I would also, I hope at some point, especially the new members, the older members, or the seasoned members, the veteran members, not older, have a -- already have a pretty good working relationship with the leadership team. But I want to talk with the new folks about it just briefly, so you can put a face with the name. Now, one thing that I will do repeatedly throughout the course of this presentation is refer to Sylvia as the Assistant Chief of Police, because currently, that's what she is. But we're in the process of changing all of our directives manuals, our policies, which is renaming her job responsibility to Deputy Chief. So this slide actually depicts Sylvia Morgan as the Deputy Chief. And then it breaks it into three different divisions within the Police Department. All three of those divisions are led by the leadership team, and I'll explain a little bit about those as we go through this. Just from a manpower breakdown, I have a total of 71 permanent full-time employees that are my responsibility currently. 55 of those are sworn police officers, 16 are not sworn, and we have one part-time, three-quarter time, actually, who is Pat Moose, who is our statistician. Pat, again, is overwhelmed, but Pat is incredible with collecting data and information for all of us about trends in apartment crimes, in general crime patterns. She's not an analyst, but she is responsible for getting a great deal of, collecting a great deal of data for us. And typically, when you ask for statistical stuff, Pat Moose is the person that will handle that. With those 55 sworn, currently, we are down four. We have one who is on a duty-related injury. In all probability, that officer, he was injured during a physical altercation during arrest. And unfortunately, it doesn't appear that he's going to be able to come back to full police duties, so we're in the process of working with that. His shoulder, literally, his shoulder has to be replaced as a result of that. So that's in a real holding pattern. We also have one police officer who is still in the field training program, so they're not out and able to take calls for service. And we have two who are currently, brand-new, who are currently in the Police Training Institute over at the University of Illinois. So we're four down as we speak. Just to talk a little bit about Deputy Chief Morgan, Sylvia Morgan, and Sylvia, as I said, is the second-in-command. She's got 20 years of service. She's really touched every facet within the Police Department with respect to the different divisions that she has worked with. And she's been in place for a little bit over a year, and has been doing an incredible job. She's basically responsible for the day-to-day activities of working with the operational needs of the Police Department, especially in the Patrol Division. Other duties that she's responsible for, and when we talk about the three divisions, we talk about the Patrol Division, we talk about the administrative function, and then the Support Services Division. So when you walk by the front desk, and you see the police service representatives, those are non-sworn personnel who do a variety of things. They do all of our data entry, they do all of our records, copying and sending to the state's attorney's office. They also take walk-in reports. So if someone were to walk in and say, "Hey, I lost my purse. I have no idea where I lost it, but these are the contents that I recall," rather than a police officer coming off the street to take that, our police service representative would actually document that stuff. There are six police service representatives, and Sylvia is responsible for overseeing them, as well as the Parking Enforcement Division, and as you can see by the slide, a number of other job responsibilities outside of the operational end. Within the Investigations Division, Lieutenant Bryant Seraphin is responsible for overseeing that. And as you can see, he has Sergeant Dan Morgan, who is the day-to-day supervisor of the five detectives, as well as one School Resource Officer. Tim McNodd is our School Resource Officer, and he's unfortunately responsible for covering all of the information that we have to develop within all of the schools. He is primarily responsible for working at Urbana High School. But he's over at the middle school, a great number of the -- in fact, I mentor over at the middle school. And every time that I'm there, I see Tim walking in to help address a question or a need on the part of the middle school staff. So he interacts with all of the different schools, including the grade schools throughout the community. John Lockard is our Evidence Technician. He's a retired police officer, and he processes all the evidence, and then makes it ready to take to the Illinois State Police Crime Lab or whatnot. And then we have the police service representatives. Bryant's got 19 years. He, too, has had an incredible amount of experience. All of us really start in the Patrol Division, in the Uniform Division, and then from there, you kind of break into specialty units. Where you see, for instance, on TV where there is a burglary unit, and a homicide detective, and sex crimes detectives on some of the television shows. Quite honestly, we don't have the manpower to be able to specialize with all of our investigators. So they're all considered general criminal investigators. They may be responsible for all coming out and working a murder, or they might work a child sex abuse case. It depends entirely on what the types of calls are. Typically, the investigators are responsible for handling the more serious, or complicated, or long-term cases. So the patrolmen will go out, the guys in the uniform will go out, handle the original call, the complaint, and then if it rises to the level of needing some expertise, or a great deal of a time commitment, or because of the complicated manner in which it's being presented, then Lieutenant Seraphin will get a call, and he'll make a determination as to whether or not a detective goes out and handles the case from there. In addition to Bryant, I mean, again, all of our leadership team, that's myself, Sylvia Morgan, and three lieutenants, wear a great number of hats, only because we have to do a great deal with a limited number of resources. That's not a complaint. That's just the reality that we have to face in modern-day policing. We have a lot of unfunded mandates that pop up with, you know, the instant communication system that all of us wear on our hip today, and the videotapes associated with it. It's amazing how quickly the social media gets things out. So the Police Department has, along with that, of course, that's a very positive thing for our community, and for the country, and for society, but it also brings with it some trouble. So in addition to Tim working the School Resource Officer, he is also responsible for working with the Sex Crimes Unit, where Internet porn, which is becoming a very, very problematic issue, is coming up. Tim has some expertise in working with that. So, again, I don't mean to emphasize that each of us are doing more with less, but unfortunately, we are. And that's just the reality that all police agencies across the nation are facing. There are -- I want to talk a little bit about the Patrol Division, because some time ago, we had it under, the span of control was under one lieutenant. And with 11, actually 10 sergeants, and 32 police officers, the span of control was outrageous. So about almost two years ago, we changed the philosophy a little bit of the structure of the Patrol Division, and we moved one of the lieutenants from the Administrative Division. Sylvia is now overseeing that. And we kind of divided the city in half. So we now have a North District Commander and a South District Commander. And for the ease of trying to -- it doesn't matter if you call and say, "Hey, I need to speak with Bryant," or "I need to speak with Bob Fitzgerald," Bob is the South District Commander, and Rich is the North District. So if you just take University Avenue and shoot it east and west, anything north of there typically Rich is responsible for. He's the North District Commander, and Bob is the South District. So anything south. That's why when we go to the SUNA meetings, or we go to the Philo Road Business District, Bob is always presenting all the information to all of those folks, because he's responsible for the south side. When we go to a Ucap meeting, which Carol will be a part of now, I'm assuming, Rich Surles is the North District Commander, so Rich provides all the statistics for the north end. And then you can see the breakdown of who's responsible. We have some, a few other job responsibilities besides patrol. And I will speak very briefly to the unit that's on the far-left side, which is our Street Crimes Unit. Rich actually oversees the Street Crimes Unit, but it's designed, it's three plainclothes police officers who are uniformed, depending on the job responsibility that they have, that are literally responsible for addressing, putting out the fires in a citywide problem. If we had a series of 15 motor vehicle burglaries, our Street Crimes Unit would be responsible for analyzing the complaints, identifying the data that we have available to us, and then planning a strategy to try to address that concern by altering their work hours and whatnot, and being able to focus on when those problems are occurring, what they can do to try to identify the people responsible for them. So our Street Crimes Unit really is an incredibly busy unit comprised of three folks who are responsible for, again, putting out the fires. So if you ever see any of our Street Crimes folks, they may be dressed just like you. You know, jeans and a tee-shirt one day, they may be in a uniform the next day. We also use them to supplement our Patrol Division when we have, for instance, huge events across the street at some of these venues where there are 1,000 or more people. We just don't have the manpower to be able to address that, so our Street Crimes Unit will put on uniforms that night and address it. On the far-right, Bob Fitzgerald is responsible for the Animal Control Officer. Chelsea Angelo is our Animal Control Officer. She's responsible, she does a phenomenal job, because she's not only responsible for the animals, she also handles our Risk Watch Program, which is the education program for the kids. She just does, she wears a number of different hats. And although you'll see her walking around in a polo shirt and somewhat of a uniform, working the animal control issue, she does an incredible education program for all of the police agencies as well with respect to how to handle dishes, dogs, a number of different things. So Bob is responsible for Chelsea's scheduling and whatnot, and Rich is responsible for Street Crimes. And then you'll see the breakdown there between the South and North Divisions with respect to the number of officers. Rich has got, again, this is, I don't want to read these to you, but Rich has got a great deal of experience as well. The EVAC course that he teaches is actually one that is really kind of an innovative approach. We go out to Shunut Air Force Base because of the old runway there, and have the ability to do some emergency vehicle driving tactics that Rich and some others have been specially trained in, and it has reduced our number of accidents immensely. Because each police agency in our community is kind of stretched to the limits with respect to instructors, oftentimes, what we do in our community is pool the resources. So we may say we need two instructors from Champaign, two instructors from county, two instructors from Urbana, and two instructors from Rantoul. And collectively, those eight will rotate all of the police officers throughout the Champaign County area with respect to specialized training. EVAC is an example of that. Bob Fitzgerald, our South District Commander, you'll see, he's got a total of 26 years. He came to us after 11 years of working up in the city of Chicago. In fact, he specializes in the game tactical unit. And Bob handles the South District, and does a tremendous job of working with -- he's, quite honestly, has been spearheading a majority of the neighborhood watch groups. Now Preston James and some other folks, one of our officers, really took on the initiative to kind of help organize this. But when you hear about neighborhood watch groups, you're going to hear about Bob Fitzgerald, because Bob is the one that was responsible for making sure that all the folks continually contact the police officers on a monthly -- on a monthly timeframe, and try to help with them. As a matter of fact, at the end of the program, I'm going to pass these out, because Bob and Preston and Rich Surles specifically were responsible for kind of putting this project together that's a very informative project on the neighborhood watch groups. All right, this is, just when I talk about beat assignments, and where the Police Department allocates its resources, and who's responsible for what, this is an overview of kind of how the city is divided. And again, if you can find, I know that's very small, but that's okay. I'll break them into individual beats for you in a minute. But you can find, if you can visualize where University Avenue is, if you cut that in half, east and west, the north is Rich, the south is Bob Fitzgerald. Just kind of as a visual aid. This is a close-up of Beat One. Now Beat One, the boundaries are Wright Street on the west, University on the south, Broadway on the east, and the city limits on the north. Carol, this is, a majority of your ward is located in Beat 6-1. So when you mention there are issues in, or we mention that there are issues in Beat 6-1, you'll have a better understanding that a majority of that is yours, although it overlaps just a little bit, as you'll see. This is a close-up of Beat 6-2. The boundaries are Broadway on the west, Main on the south, the city limits on the east, and the city limits on the north. A portion of this is also Ms. Ammons' ward, as well as Dennis Roberts' ward in Ward 5. Beat 3, the boundary lines are Wright on the west, the city limits on the south, Broadway Avenue and Vine Street on the east, and University Avenue and Main Street on the north. And Charlie, a majority of this is your ward, Ward 1, along with Eric Jacobson. And Bill Brown has just a portion of this, as well as a little bit in Diane Marlin's ward. So Beat 6-3 is a rather large ward that touches a lot of the different representatives. Beat 4, the boundary lines are Vine Street, Michigan, Florida, and the city limits on the east. And again, this is one that touches several of the older persons, Bill Brown, Dennis Roberts, Mike Madigan in Ward 6. And finally, we have Beat 6-5. And 6-5 is Vine Street on the west, the city limits on the south, the city limits on the east, and Michigan/Florida Avenue on the north. And this encompasses some of Bill Brown's ward, Ward 4, and Mike Madigan's Ward 6, with a little bit of, and with Diane Marlin, Ward 7 included in that as well. And your ward maps on the city website can identify specifically where they are. And if, I was trying to get foils together that I could lay them over, and I just didn't have the time to be able to do it. So, again, if you ever hop in a squad car and you ride with us, we'll be happy to run through those. But I can, these beat maps are also available. You're more than welcome, if you ever need them, to holler and give me a call, and I will be happy to give copies of those for you. I identified a number of other job responsibilities, and I want to go back to one just very quickly, because I think it's important that we talk about it for just a little bit. One of the other job responsibilities of Bob Fitzgerald, Lieutenant Bob Fitzgerald, is the Crisis Intervention Team. And I mention that to you, because as you are aware from the social service presentations, the Police Departments, not only in Urbana, but throughout the country, but certainly in Champaign County, are dealing with an incredible increase in the number of mental health-related calls. And that's a very loosely-defined mental health issues, and we can certainly talk more about it later. But the Crisis Intervention Team officers are specially-trained officers who work with the community element folks, and with the people from the local hospitals, who can act as a broker of services when we encounter an individual who we really don't want to take to jail, but because he was being disorderly and disrupting the movie theater, as a hypothetical example, and he was asked to leave, and he refuses to leave, and he's, and again, I'm over-exaggerating, but he's howling at the moon, it really, I mean, it's abundantly clear that there are some mental health issues that we might need to deal with. And really, our alternatives are somewhat limited. It's either we ignore it, where he's going to, historically, we have found that he will come back and continue to disrupt the movie, or we end up arresting him for disorderly conduct. The Crisis Intervention Team officers have the ability to make contacts. Unfortunately, it's time-consuming. So our CITs are oftentimes taken off the street for several hours, trying to address the needs of the community member, yet, and it's a very valuable program, don't get me wrong, but it's one that is very time-consuming. Joel Sanders, Sergeant Joel Sanders oversees our CIT officers, and he does an absolutely incredible job. He does the stat work for me as well. And over 300, we've had over 300 mental health-related calls last year, in 2012, compared to 2011. So it's been a tremendous increase, and our CIT officers are the ones that focus their attention. We try to have them focus their attention on working with those folks. But it's a program that I want you to be aware of, because you will hear about it quite often whenever you hear me speak about different things. In summary, I guess, I want to, I don't want to overwhelm you with statistics. I want to just let you know that with the 55 police officers that we're working with, we have over 20,000 calls for service per year. We take over 7,000 police reports, and that's between ourselves and the police service representatives that are up front. I can tell you that the good news is that in the first quarter of 2013, our crimes, general crimes, identified crimes, have gone down slightly, and that's a good thing. I'm hesitant to share that, because that was during the cold months, when there wasn't a lot of activity. And historically, we see a huge increase in the violent crime and the number of crimes when the warm weather hits us. And as I understand it, tomorrow's going to be 85. So each time that there's a peak, there's peaks and valleys within the calls for service and the number of police reports, and the number of violent crime. But at least there's a light at the end of the tunnel. I have to believe that, to a certain extent, our involvement with the community has some impact on the fact that our calls for service, you know, oftentimes, everybody looks at the statistics alone. And I often say, it's very important that we understand, we are out asking, literally, up to 1,000 people to get more engaged with the community, and if they even remotely have an issue, we want you to call us. So we're asking to generate those additional calls for service by asking for that cooperation. And initially, we see spikes in calls for service, and the fact that there are more job responsibilities for those officers. The good news is, is we continue to collaborate with the community. It ends up working to our advantage, because oftentimes, people will then engage, or even come out and visibly stand on their porch when they see people walking down the street, and it actually acts as a deterrent, and they get involved. And we provide strategies, which are identified in this book that I'm going to pass out to you. So the collaborative effort of the Police Department, we want to continue, obviously, to move forward. I know we're going to talk about a number of different issues in the near future, but hopefully, we're going to stay on track with that. The last thing I'm going to ask that you do, other than re-invite you to hop in a squad car anytime you feel that you have an opportunity to do so, or if you would like to learn more. But oftentimes, you folks will get [inaudible 00:01:29]. But oftentimes, you folks will get contacted by your constituents and say, "Look, I'm interested in the crime information in my neighborhood," or "I'm interested in this." Pat can get the information. I know Todd Rent is going to present in the near future, and God bless Todd Rent because Todd handles so many of our Freedom of Information Act requests that we would be overwhelmed had it, if it weren't for Todd and Tony, who works up in that office as well, because we're just inundated with FOIA requests since the law changed. So they're working a lot on trying to address the needs and the requests from the community, but there is a program called CrimeReports.com, and I should have passed this out first so you can write on there. So I think if you don't mind, let me do that real quickly, Charlie, if you don't mind. If you take one and pass it on. And the, if you can write it on the bottom of your book, when someone calls and says, "Can you look into, or can you help me identify crime trends or crime problems in the south part of the city, or the north part of the city, or the west part of the city, or on my block?" If you just type in CrimeReports.com, or share that website with your constituents, those that are interested, believe it or not, that is as close to real-time crime reporting as we can get. It's within eight hours, the information, all, every time we do a press release or a press summary, it gets uploaded and entered and goes some other state and then back here. But if you go to CrimeReports.com, and then you can just play with it, you can actually filter it, it identifies all the registered sex offenders in the Twin Cities, or it can identify just the burglaries, or it can identify just the, the crimes that have been reported at, you know, at the intersection of Main and Vine. That's how far it can drill down. So it's a great tool. It's also on our website, but I wanted to give that to you because oftentimes, more often than you're going to like sometimes, you're going to get calls from folks saying, "We're interested in this, and we want you to get the information for us," and you can refer the information directly to them, and they'll be able to see it in real time. Okay. I know I threw a lot of stuff at you. I, I, this was just an overview of the police department. I, I would certainly be willing to answer any questions that anybody has.
Bill Brown.
Um, just, like Beat Sixty-Two, there's a lot of areas like Scottswood, and some of the areas are outside the city limits.
Right.
What happens when there's a call there? I mean, it's the county's responsibility, but if you're the closest officer, you have a close officer, will you respond, and how much of that happens?
Right. And that's a great question. The, fortunately for us, Meg Cad, the, the computer aided dispatch center on East Main Street is responsible for handing all the calls that come into Champaign County, with the exception of Rantoul, and that may be changing. We don't know that yet, but we're in the process of talking with them. But all the calls come in. Fortunately, their GEO code system, their sys, their, their mapping system is so sophisticated that as soon as you say an address on, you know, East Nevada, it will identify which police jurisdiction is responsible for that. Now, typically, that is going to be the county because it's a checkerboard out in that area. But I can tell you that in any emergency call for service, we share a radio frequency with the University of Illinois and with the Champaign County Sheriff's Office, because we also have in-car computers. So, and that's another whole topic for another whole evening. But all of us listen to those radio calls. So hypothetically, if there was a shots fire call on East Nevada in the 2,700 block, and an Urbana police officer was at Prairie Green, our protocol is that we support each agency. Typically, the sheriff's office is handling the rural areas much further outside the city limits, so we will certainly help them, just like I often say, we should, we should put an Urbana police patch on the left sleeve of every U of I officer. Because I can tell you that on many Friday and Saturday evenings, we are so overwhelmed with calls for service that we can't get to violent domestics. And in that case, we get on the radio and we ask the supervisor of the University of Illinois Police if they can support us, and before we even ask, there are two or three cars that are going. So we work with one another very closely. Any 911 call in an, in an emergency, I assure you that if Champaign were at Wright and Dublin, and there was a call of a shots fire, the Champaign officer would come over until we could get there. So we work very closely, and we have an interstate com, or a mutual aid compact within the county so that theoretically, all of us have county-wide arrest authority.
Anyone else?
I, I would urge, if you haven't been out, to get out. My favorite is a Friday, starting, you know, and, and it's really, you have to do a 12-hour shift to really get a feel for it. You know, start at 3:00 in the afternoon and plan on going till 3:00 in the morning if you can. And pick a warm night when the university's in session.
And, and if you can only afford two hours, or, or that's fine, or if you can only hop in for an hour, I, I would encourage you, any amount of time that you can at least get a better idea of what we're doing, by all means, feel free to do it.
Thank you very much.
You are quite welcome. I think, Mayor, what we are going to do now, if you don't mind, is I'm going to pass the rein on to Ms. Clark, and then afterwards, folks, we're going to go upstairs and we can talk a little bit more. Okay?
So Phyllis. First of all, I'd like to say I'm very pleased to have this opportunity to at least give you some information that I think is pertinent to what it is that you need to know as a city councilman. I have ordered some books for you on conflicts of interest, on the sunshine law, and on what you are supposed to do now as a city councilman. Many of you have already been on the council long enough to know a lot of the things that's going on, but there are new things out there that I think you need to be abreast of. They were supposed to be here today, but they haven't gotten here yet, so hopefully, as soon as I get them, I'll pass those on to you. I have put together, I've gone through the stuff that Jack Waller did a few years ago to see what needed to be updated and what we could still use. And I have put together a little booklet for you that I think you need to keep and to keep with you to go through. It's called the Council Orientation and Procedures Thing for 2013. I've got a small list of, of contents that you will find in here. It's going to be a welcome from our office, gives you a little bit about what it is that we do. It's just a very sketchy overview of what we do in the clerk's office. The next thing that you'll see is a Dates to Remember, which deals with what's coming up for you. The newly-elected officials' seminars that's being held throughout the state, and I also have the order blanks or the registration forms for you that I'll give to you before you leave today, so that if you're interested in going to any of the IML workshops, then you need to just let my office know, and we will make your arrangements for you. I've also given you some information on open meetings requirements. You are now required to take the online registration for the Open Meetings Act. I've given you the webpage that you need to go to, to get to that, and it will not let you go past one if you got the wrong answer, so you'll get an opportunity to go back to it and fill it in the correct way, and it'll, that's when you'll be able to pass on to the next one. So there's no fail.
Yeah.
Yes.
Do all of us, even though we've, some of us have taken this already, have to do it again?
You have, you have 90 days after taking the office to do it.
Okay, so we all have to do it again.
And I've given you the date. Yeah. You will have to do it again. You'll have to do this by August the 5th. Okay? Yes.
Do you point out that you're the budget person for the council?
I didn't point that out, but I am, so if you need anything, you just contact my office, and we maintain your budget there. Okay? And we'll handle everything for you. So all you have to do is talk to me, and it's done. Okay? I've given you a little information on the meetings, such as special meetings, what you have to do for that, how meetings are called, and that kind of thing. It tells you what our special meetings, that you have 48 hours for notice of the media and citizens. That information needs to be, to me, if it's a special meeting, three to four hours of notification is required to the clerk's office of a special meeting that you're wanting to have. You must know too, that in a special meeting, you must have an agenda, and you must state on that agenda the purpose of that special meeting. These things you can read for yourself to gather more information, because it goes more into detail than what I'm saying to you. We have special meetings such as things for the budget hearing and budget markups. Those are done by special meetings or any special meeting that's called by the mayor. Executive sessions and closed sessions, that's another thing that we have to deal with. You can do those by, we do that by roll call vote, we go into that. You can only take a consensus in executive session, and you can take no final action on anything there. You can only decide what you would like to have done, as long as it's done in open session. The corporate council is the one that is supposed to state in the closed session what that closed session's purpose is for. We're going to talk about your agenda. Your packets are mailed to you on Thursdays, and if you require them by electronic, then you need to let me know, and we will send those to you electronically. The city, you know, much of the work that is done by you is done through city commissions. That's where they deliberate on anything that they want to bring forward to the council that can be done by statute or any recommendations to you. I'm just hitting this a lick and a promise. Your Appendix One deals with your council rules, and I went through the ones that Jack had put together some time ago. They were in pretty good shape, so I didn't have to really make very many changes to that. The one that I want you to pay close attention to is the debate limits. Okay? You all are allowed five minutes for each time that you're recognized by the chair to discuss an item. In committee of the whole, there's not a whole lot of restrictions on how many times you can be called upon to speak. If there is something through public input that you're addressing, you have like one minute to do that. But we don't hold you to that, because in, in committee of the whole, you're not held to Roberts Rule as a council. You get an opportunity to say what you want to say, when you want to say it. Okay? The mayor is to retain the right to allow the public to speak on any issue at hand at other times other than during the public communications time. Sometimes she allows them to talk, well, all the time, those that want to, during the time that the subject is coming before the council. So our mayor has been pretty good at, at getting that through at a time that people are interested in talking. The committee of the whole, the chair of the committee of the whole's position, it rotates among the alderpersons of each ward numerically in that order, beginning with Ward One and following through to Ward Seven. The vice chair of, of the committee of the whole is the alderperson of the ward that bears the next highest number, except for Ward One, which follows Ward Seven. The chair of the office, from the time, the, the chair shall be in charge from the time prior to the committee meeting that is adjourned until the next adjournment of the committee meeting. The vice chair shall be in the office during the next, during the meeting where the scheduled chair is not in attendance. And when you're speaking, when you ask to join into the debate, or you have a question, you as chair has to relinquish that chair to the vice chair that's next to you, or the one that's coming up next for you. And after you have finished your debate, then you are to regain that chair back. And it says here, there's some failure to observe these procedures, but I don't think there's any charges to you for that, if you don't do it. You just tick me off, that's all.
Just to go back just for a second, to understand, committee of the whole is not under the committee of the whole.
You want to turn your mic on, just push the button. Thank you. Thank you. The committee of the whole is not beholden to Roberts Rules.
No, you don't, you don't have to stick to them strictly there, simply because of committee of the whole, you are discussing thoroughly the information that you're wanting to get out, so that when you make your decision on an item, you're making it on an item that you all have worked hard to make sure that it's going to affect everybody the same way in the city.
But the, the full council meeting is Roberts Rules.
Yeah, you should, but you don't really have, you know, in your rules, you can change them anytime you get ready.
So these are not the rules, these are just?
These are council rules that have been voted on before. If you want to make changes to that, you as a council has the ability to do that. Yes, ma'am?
I was going to say that I've always tried to err on the side of, if there's more discussion, let's let the discussion go on, because Roberts Rules is very useful when you have a very large group. But we have a pretty small group, and I think people get ideas from each other and want to comment on it, so that's been my philosophy, and if we want to formalize it or change it, we can.
Yeah, you can do that. Yes, Dennis.
And the other maybe procedural thing to think about is, when, when we have a person during public input who's providing information, and we, we can ask questions for clarification.
Yes.
But we're really not supposed to be opening debate on the issue. It's really just clarification questions. And I know that sometimes we fall into debate.
Yes.
And we shouldn't, we should, we should save our debating on the topic until public input's over and we have now debate within the city council itself.
Yes. In Appendix Two that I have for you there is just some ordinances that Jack had in place that thought, you know, we thought was okay for you, for the purpose of public meetings and reciting the pledge, and the one on sanitary sewer connection. We felt that that was important, so I left those in there. And then there's the, the other portion that deals with what is in the code of ordinances, which kind of generally tells you everything that, that we've already kind of gone through. And these are things that have already been codified by the city, so it's in the city code. And I kind of put that in there for you, just in case there was anything that you wanted to look at over and above. It gives you information on the committees, on voting procedures, and on electronic attendance at the meetings. In order for one of you to, one or even two of you to attend electronically, you have to have a physical presence of the council members here before you can do that. Otherwise, you wouldn't be allowed to do it. Okay? And you can only go electronically if you have an illness, or if you are out doing something for your job, or something for the city, or there's an illness in your family. Those are the things that, you know, that says that you can do this electronically. And you need to let us know in enough time that we can get everything set up for you to do that. Jack had, in Appendix Four, he had some information on sus, on suggestions on how to handle speech, abusive speech from the audience. And it wasn't at all what I would have told you to do, but that's what he said to do. So I'm okay with that. Yeah, Appendix Four tells you that information. I did not go in and change anything. He's got a lot of he shoulds, but it's, it's either him or her. So whoever is the mayor at the time, or the council person that's speaking at the time, uh... He's got a lot of he shoulds, but it's, it's either him or her. So whoever is the mayor at the time, or the council person that's speaking at the time, have the opportunity to make the decision as to what it is that they want to do. There's information in Appendix Five on veto override, on the veto and veto override. That's information that you all need to know. So that's in here for you. And then Appendix Six, which is our last one in here, has to do with parliamentary procedures. I need to let you all know that I am a member of the National Association of Parliamentarians. I have gone through the training for that. And I am presently going through the training to get my certification as a registered parliamentarian. So I'm doing that now. Hopefully, I'll have that before the four-year term is up. But that's a heavy test, and I got to study. What I have here for you is called the ABCs of parliamentary procedure. Tells you what parliamentary procedure is, why it's important, and how do members get to say what they want to say. It tells you here what a motion is. You know, some people want to know in other areas, why is it important? It's important because it gives you flexibility in your meeting. It gives you the democratic rule. It allows for fair hearing from all of you, and it protects your right to be heard. And you get your say by making a motion. There are four general types of the motion, as your main motion, your subsidiary motions, your privileged motions, and incidental. Your main motion is the one that introduces the subject for consideration. The subsidiary motions are the ones that allow you to make an amendment to that. Your privileged motions are ones that relate to the pending business, or where you need to say, I move that we adjourn if you don't like what's going on, but that doesn't necessarily pass muster. Somebody can just not second your motion and you're going on. Incidental motions are ones that, say like when you're getting ready to extend the meeting time from the, like we have it at eleven o'clock, and you have to extend it for thirty minutes, that's an incidental motion, when you call to change that order. When are motions in order? They're in order when they are relevant to the business at hand. They're in order when they're not meant to be obstructive, or they're not frivolous. Do motions need a second? In most cases, they do. However, if someone starts to speak at that, on that motion, and no one has seconded it, that person then says, I'm seconding this motion for discussion. So what I would do is say, say for instance, if Charlie made a motion, no one seconded it, and Dennis started to talk on that motion, in my minutes, it would say that Dennis had seconded the motion through the process of speaking. Can you interrupt the speaker? Yes, you can. What motions are debatable? Privileged motions, they're debatable. Those are the ones that cause for the orders of the day. That means that you want to know what the process of the agenda is supposed to be. Subsidiary motions is something such as you lay it on the table, or you limit the extent of the debate. And an incidental motion is one that calls for the point of order. And that means that you have stopped debate, and you're calling for the question at that Can motions be amended? Yes, they can. Can motions be reconsidered? Yes, they can. They can only be reconsidered if the side that has won the thing, say if it's been voted down, the person on the voting down side would have to bring that motion back for reconsideration. And it would have to be seconded by the person that seconded the motion when it was, when it failed. Same way, if it was a motion that passed and someone wants to change their vote or to reconsider how they did it, it would have to be the person from the winning side to say yes, and then call the motion back again. And you all already know how to present a motion. You do that by getting the chair to acknowledge you, and you bring it forward. Okay.
Diane has a question.
Okay.
Sometimes we talk about a topic before a motion is made, then a motion is made, and then we talk about it some more. Is there, and there's more debate and discussion, is there a limit to what you can, how much you can debate after a motion is made? Or should we try to make the motion early in the process? Or what's, what's the guideline for that?
When, when the mayor presents an item to you, and she's waiting for someone to make a discussion on that, you have a time that you can discuss it. But before you vote on it, someone has to move that motion and a second to that motion. If you need more time to debate it, you can, but you still have to do that before you can take an action on it. But, you know, if you start talking on it before anyone has made a, a motion to put it into play, when the mayor gives you the title of what's coming on before you, she's put it into play for you. So that's something that you can do. You can discuss it, then make a motion on moving it and a second on that, before you take final action on it. You can discuss it again after that. Yes.
And one of the other things that one can do, but it's, I don't think it's covered quite here, is to divide the issue?
Yes.
Can you explain that for us, too?
You can take an issue that comes, comes before you. If you want to separate it out into two different parts, then you can do that. And you do that by making a motion to separate the two items, even if they're all under the same thing. If you want to talk about part A before you talk about part B, because there's some different kind of information you have on part B, then you would make the motion to separate the two, or to separate that into two parts. You would have to have a second to do that. And if someone seconds that, then that gives you an opportunity to discuss that first part. And then you would have to do a motion and a second to discuss the second part.
And one can, one could then ask for the vote on the first issue separately from the vote on the second issue?
When you separate it, then you give yourself an opportunity to vote on those two separate.
Okay.
Mike?
Just one minor addition to that, too. The item has to be clearly divisible.
Yes.
So, I know that sounds obvious, but a lot of times, people try to divide the question, and the question can't be divided.
Right. And when it can't be, it can't be.
Right.
But, and I think in the case Dennis is possibly talking about, that it would be.
Sure.
Carol?
I just want to just go back for clarity's sake. A motion can be discussed here before, so you can discuss a matter before making a motion?
If, if you're discussing it, you're deliberating on that particular issue.
I thought you couldn't discuss an issue until it was actually motioned and brought to the floor for discussion.
You can't take final action on it.
Hmm.
Okay? When the mayor gives you the information, gives you the, the subject that you're talking about, she's putting it in play for debate. That's what you're doing. But before you can go anywhere with that, to make any amendments to it, you have to have someone to move it and to second it.
Charlie?
Yeah, maybe I can sort of explain a scenario. Typically, what we do is we get a mix of public input, staff input, questions back and forth on, you know, related to the topic. We might not necessarily, especially as we're trying to develop something new, something that comes boilerplate, might be very simple, you know, staff report, no public input, boom, we just move it and, and exactly as staff presents it, might make a small adjustment to it, because of the questions that are asked and that sort of thing. So, so there's a range of, of things. But the discussion before a motion typically occurs when we're working on a new area or something very complicated, that has lots of ramifications. Where you might see that tonight would be, later in tonight's meeting, would be when we start talking about the fees. For example, there'd be lots of questions of staff and, and some back and forth before that, that will, will go forward.
Carol?
I think I'm trying to make a division here, because tonight, as an example, is the committee of the whole, where there is lots of discussion, because we're not going to vote on those issues at this meeting. But when it comes to the actual council meeting, what, from the outside looking in, it seems that the discussion is happening before actual motion is made, and then the council's not clear when to make the motion, and then finally, they make the motion. So that becomes a little confusing if, if the rules are not actually applying the same in the committee of the whole as they are. And it may be not something for you to answer, but, but just...
In actuality, the motion has been made in the committee, because they have to make a motion to send it from the discussion that they're making...
Right, I'm clear on that part.
...to the city council meeting.
Right.
Okay? So when they get into the city council meeting, and they open this back up again, then they have, if they want to discuss it again, they can, but they have to be limited, should be limited, on how much discussion you do at that point. The committee of the whole is where you make all of the changes and amendments and adjustments to anything that comes before you, because the council meeting is where you have to make your final decision. And sometimes, they don't want to make a final decision because of stuff that people in the community have said, or from the audience, that they want to make an, an adjustment. So then they send it to another meeting in order to be able to do that.
Charlie?
And a distinction needs to be made there, because we have, typically what we do is, we'll get a report, the committee chair from the previous week will, will, will present the report from the committee of the whole, and will move each item, because it's been sent to council with the recommendation for approval, usually, sometimes with no recommendation. But there'll be a, a motion from the chair, and a second will come as usual. And then we'll, so typically, that, that's the old business that's come from council, or from committee. But for new business that comes to council, from a commission, or some other new business item, then we don't necessarily have a motion to start from. And we might start with discussion, general discussion, and staff reports, and stuff like that. And also, the other thing, too, in the committee reports, we might get new information from staff, that might cause a change in, in, in what goes forward.
Okay. And you, you have to remember, too, that the person moving the motion should speak first on it. You don't have to vote for it, but you should speak first on it. And that's one of the things that we seem to do pretty well, so I don't see a problem with that. There are different ways to take your vote. You can take it by viva voce, or that's the voice vote. You can do it by show of hands, you can do it by roll call. We never do it by ballot, because that's not necessary. And sometimes, there is a general consent when there's a vote out there and nobody says anything. So if that's the case, then that means that the vote has passed. So you should say whether or not you agree or disagree. Otherwise, if there's no comment on whether, which direction you want to go, then that vote generally will pass. There's information in here on nominations and elections, just something for your reading. There's also some papers in here that gives you information on how to handle a motion. You all know how to do that pretty well, but sometimes you get a little off track. There are four principles to handling a motion. One thing is the main motion. The other one is the same, or substantially the same question cannot be considered twice during the same session. So you can't consider something twice. Say for instance, if it's come to you before, and you want to reconsider that again, then you have to do that by having it to be reconsidered. The main motion has been temporarily disposed of. The same, or substantially the same question cannot be introduced again while it is still under the control of the assembly. Once a motion has been adopted, the same question cannot be renewed unless the motion is rescinded or reconsidered, which is what I've told you. There's information on how to use the right motion. You guys do pretty good with that, so I don't have to elaborate. Motions that bring a question back again before the assembly, it tells you how to do A lot of times, people think that when you put a motion on the table, that you are putting it on there for, to come back at another time. The only time you can table a motion and, and bring it back at a different time is when you table that motion, and you specifically say when you want it to come back. Otherwise, if you table it during a meeting, you have to bring it back before the end of that meeting is over with. If you want to kill a motion, or you want to kill an item, you send it, you can say that, I want to table this indefinitely. And when you say indefinitely, that means that it is no longer anything that you want to consider. So those are things that you can do if you want to get rid of something. Okay? I've got information, a little bit more on incidental motions for you. I'm giving you a copy of the types of motions and the order of their precedence, whether or not a second is needed, whether you can interrupt the speaker, whether it's debatable, whether it's amendable, and what votes required to pass a specific motion. I've given you that. I'm giving you information on the mysteries of a quorum. Tells you how many people that you have, what's considered a quorum, and then what's considered a majority of the quorum. These are things that some people don't quite know, but then they eventually figure it out. I'm giving you information on the role of the committee chair. Tells you, there's about fifteen things on that that tells you what the committee chair should do. I'm giving you information on the rules governing the debate. There's about ten items on that, that tells you what needs to be done to control the debate. I'm giving you information on the decorum of a debate, like you can't talk about somebody, or you can't make your fellow council member feels as though he's just been stepped all over. So you got to be respectful of one another. And the last thing that I have here for you is the Ten Commandments of Parliamentary Procedure, with the very eleventh one being put in there. The council rule supersedes Robert rules. So you all have an opportunity to bring it on any way you think you need to, to get the job done. Is there any other questions?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Charlie?
I move that we go into closed session to consider security procedures pursuant to five Illinois Consolidated Statute, one twenty over two C eight.
I second.
Okay, there's a motion in this, in a second to go into closed session. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Okay. Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson is not here. Ms. Ammons?
Yes.